To be submitted. So, not sure if that application is before you, but I'd respectfully submit those be required as part of the application and that that be deferred and or denied. You've also heard and in your packets is information in regard to what can and what cannot be built. There may or may not be a pending subdivision plan pending before you, but the deed is pretty clear, going back to 1904 and continuing to the present, that this lot can have one home and one home only, not two. So subdivision where only one can be built would be silly. So we'll submit some written comments, but rest assured, we'll be actively following that submission and talking with your solicitor because the deeds are pretty clear. Last but not least, you've heard that there is pending currently now, as of Saturday, a submission with the Historic Commission to render this property historic significance. That application's complete. I won't go over the major details, but it begins with 1904, but not just when it was built, but who it was built, and the fact that this was one of the early subdivisions in Haverford Township. Which leads to my final point. There's a lot of concern with respect to what we call infilling and the demolition of this property, but others in the Landarc Section. I'd like the Commissioners to be aware of that. In the Historic Resource Survey that was done by the Planning Commission of Delaware County in 94, one of the suggestions from 1994 is that this particular neighborhood in particular be looked at for an overlay district called Neighborhood Conservation District. I'd like to renew that request. The reason for its significance is that this was one of the earliest subdivisions in Haverford. It was deemed significant. It was laid out by an architectural firm, Kennedy, Kelsey, and Hayes, who also designed many of the houses there. So there are only three neighborhoods in all of Haverford that were recommended for consideration for a Neighborhood Conservation District. This was one of them, and it's re-plead on page 22 of that report as to the reasons why. I'd like to renew that request now, for the Commissioners to take a hard look at that and defer any further development until that overlay district is considered. That would provide financial incentives to rehabilitation as opposed to knee-jerk reaction and demolition. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. In response to 101-10B, why don't you take that?
Yeah, thanks.
Are we going to continue?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. We've got to do...
Non-agenda.
Non-agenda items.
Agenda items.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Agenda items only. Anyone on this side have to speak on anything on the agenda? Over on this side, anyone? Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I know a little bit about 101-10B because I've heard some different things and actually attended a meeting and got to hear a little bit about the property itself. There's a lot of people here with a lot of information, a lot of good information. There's also a person who owns the property here who has rights as well. What you're... What we're going to see is, as this progresses, there's going to be an application, either it's going to be filed or has just recently been filed. And when they file that application, there's a process that needs to be followed, and it will be a process whereby the matter goes to the Planning Commission, and it'll go to the Delaware County Planning Commission, and then ultimately it will come back to this board, where this board has to make a decision based upon the ordinances that are in place and that... And the laws that are in place in Haverford Township. Now, that... Having said that, this board can't really get involved in taking any sides with anybody at this point in time because we're going to be sitting like a judge. You have... You'll all have an opportunity to present whatever evidence you want to present, as will the builder and developer. And at the end of the day, after we get some reviews done by our engineer, by our Planning Commission, by our code enforcement officers, then it will come back to us, and that's where we'll need to take a position one way or another. So the Commissioners should just kind of sit back now, wait for the information to come in, and then we'll have to take a look at it and see what it says. With respect to the demolition permit, I heard somebody talking about the demolition permit and can it be held up. Demolition permit application will be submitted to our Code Department, and then our code enforcement officer would determine whether or not the demolition permit is appropriate. If a permit is issued, that permit can be appealed from. It doesn't mean it's going to stop it, but some... Anybody that has standing can take an appeal from the issuance of a building permit. There are also, and you have Mr. Bromin who'll give you better ideas on this than I can give you, but there are also other ways that if a permit's issued and you believe it's in error, you can file an appeal, and you can also get an injunction with the Court of Common pleas if it was issued in error. But this board here does not have the ability to say we are or we aren't going to issue a permit. We can take the information, we can hear the information, and we can give it to the persons that are charged under the MPC with issuing those permits, and then a decision is made, and then there are all, as I said, all different types of appeal rights that both sides would have with respect to that. I know it's a very hot issue. It's a kind of issue that, you know, can get people's blood boiling. I mean, anytime you're dealing with somebody's homes or their kids or those types of issues, it really gets passionate. What we really need to do, though, is sit back and let the process work. The board's going to act as a quasi-judicial body. They're going to hear all the evidence when it comes in, and then there'll be a decision made, and you folks, both sides, will be able to put in whatever evidence, you know, they think is appropriate, and we'll make a decision when it's time.
Okay. As for the bond issue?
It's coming up on the agenda.
Yeah, it's coming up on the agenda, and so we'll talk about that. Okay, Mr. Levin?
Mr. President, could I just ask Mr. Burn if we could have copies of... Will we get copies of everything that Mr. Bromin is submitting, the 1994 plan, overlay plan, and will we get copies of that documentation?
Anything that's submitted, we should all get copies of, sure.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
All right.
And we should also... Copies should also be given... This is just throwing this out to everybody. If you're going... It's kind of... It is like a regular hearing in court. So if you're going to present evidence to the board, it should also be given to the other side, so that it's fair. So everybody... And I'm saying that to both sides. Whoever's going to put in evidence should give copies of the evidence to the other side so that people aren't running up and sneaking documents in it. Not that anybody would, but just, you know, you can imagine what that would create. So if you're going to have documents, bring plenty of copies. We can give it to each side and give it to members of the board to make a decision.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Stacy is going to come up and give us a... An update on the Historic Commission?
Yes. Thank you very much. I just wanted to provide the members of the Board of Commissioners with the Historical Commission's recommendations for the window replacement in 17 Landilla Road. We... I am able to submit to you electronically a copy of our meeting minutes, which have not been duly... Should I wait?
No, no, go ahead. Continue.
Anyway, I wanted to provide you with our recommendations. On Saturday, November 8th, a subcommittee of the Haverford Township Historic Commission met with Mike and Jody Schlada, owners of 17 Landilla Road and Historic Resource 045-HA11 St. Andrews Church. The purpose of the meeting was to review the homeowner's plans for removing, replacing, and maintaining windows and doors of the Historic Resource. The Historical Commission was provided miscellaneous photos and images of the owner's ideals, but was not provided documentation of the desired replacement windows and doors. The subcommittee heard the owner's desire to maintain all existing openings in their original form, including opening and restoring to original size the basement area windows and areaways. We heard their passion for a thorough renovation, including retaining some historic reference in the replacement windows, but not with the goal of replacing in a manner that is period-specific. Mr. Schlada intends to maintain all existing openings, including retaining and restoring the rose window and courtyard stained glass windows. The stained glass windows from the pastor's office was believed to be original to the building. The other stained glass windows of what was the sanctuary were presented as not original to the building. Mr. Schlada intends to remove the smaller sanctuary stained glass and clear windows and replace them with aluminum clad windows with wood interior surfaces. Mr. Schlada intends to store the sanctuary stained glass windows. The openings will contain a double casement window with transom extending into a Gothic arch. The transom is to be a true divided light in a modified sunburst pattern. Mr. Schlada showed the subcommittee images from various websites of similar window combinations. Mr. Schlada intends to remove the main double entry doors at the bottom of the bell tower and relocate and repurpose them as a gateway to the courtyard, placing them parallel and prominently to lost Lansdowne Road. The main entry door opening is intended to be replaced with a large single door made of African mahogany stained to match the interior wood roof beams framed by two continuous side lights that will form into the existing arch opening. Each exterior door of the church portion is to be replaced with African mahogany door containing a small vision panel. Mr. Schlada informed the subcommittee that no work is currently planned for the annex or education building. The Historical Commission members present encouraged Mr. Schlada to present images of the doors and windows described above to the Board of Commissioners during his next scheduled meeting, which is this evening, I believe. The subcommittee present was also generously provided a tour of the church interior. Sorry, which we very much appreciate. Included in our meeting notes, which I will send to you electronically, I have one copy I can give to you for your records tonight. We included the sketches that we received from Mr. Schlada, photographs of the one, what we believe is the one original window, the rose window, and the courtyard stained glass windows which are to remain, and copies of other windows which will... Are being proposed to be removed. So I'm going to forward that to whomever. Larry, thank you. Moving on, the subcommittee present, we presented a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners that Mr. and Mrs. Schlada be granted approval to install replacement doors and windows as noted and based upon the information provided to us. Further, it was requested that the applicant provide physical images, drawings, or renderings of the planned replacement doors and windows to both the Historic Commission and Board of Commissioners. All members of the subcommittee were in favor of the motion. Thank you very much.
Okay. Let me explain that just a little bit more. It was left off the agenda, but 17 Landillo is having some work done, some new windows put in and doors, as Stacy. So for that to happen, the Historic Commission... It goes through the Historic Commission, then we make the recommendation because it is partial demolition of the building. You know, when you're taking out windows, that's what our ordinance requires. So we will be voting on it tonight. It somehow didn't get put onto the agenda, so we're going to bring it up in new business. So we wanted to get the recommendations of the Historic Commission so we... So everybody was aware of what was going on. So just want to make that clear, kind of put the cart before the horse there.
To the Commissioners.
Right.
That's our recommendation. Do you have any questions for me?
Does anybody have any questions?
Are we going to hear from the homeowner as well, then?
Yeah, the homeowner's right here. If you have any questions, you can ask the homeowner.
Well, we think if... He would have a right to rebut or put forth whatever.
If we're making a decision, and we haven't been made aware of this until just now, this evening, because it wasn't on the agenda, that if he... There's two sides to every decision we have to make, so I think it's incumbent that he get up here and speak and tell us. Is there any difference? Is it...
No, no, there's...
Okay.
He's not against the recommendations of the... Am I correct in saying that, Mike?
Record, we need to know that.
Okay. I will bring him up.
Can I clarify, before you bring him up? There's an application before us.
Yes.
And the decision simply in front of us is yes or no to that application.
Correct.
And the Historic Commission, as of right now, has no objection to yes to that application.
They're recommending that we approve it, yes.
As applied for.
Yes.
So then there really isn't anything for the order to get up and discussed.
Right, but my point is, normally we get stuff ahead of time to review.
Correct.
I haven't seen the application or know what it...
But we reviewed Landillo a month ago, two months ago, didn't we?
This is a new one.
We did this for... We did it for the roof. It was the same thing. Now he's getting the windows done, so under our historic ordinance, it's considered demolition to change...
Has anyone, with the exception of the Historic Commission, opined one way or another on the windows? And he said this to any neighbor?
No.
Any... Anybody?
No.
Any official in the township have a problem with it?
No. Not that I know of.
Yeah.
Do we know?
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, we will move on to the approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Demilio.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 14th, 2014. Second.
Motion being seconded.
Could I make just one comment? She was my tennis partner last year in mixed doubles. Karen Minnis', name is spelled M-I-N-N-I-S. If I could just get corrected for the record.
Sure. What is the correction?
M-I-N-N-I-S. Minnis.
You have that?
Page three.
Okay, we will make that correction. Everybody accepts that correction?
I accept it. Apologize for the error on behalf of the township.
Okay.
My tennis...
Any other discussion? Call a roll.
Mr. Demilio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Actually, I wasn't here. I'm going to pass. I'm going to abstain.
Yes.
Thanks, Mr. McGarty. Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
And Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leavitt?
Yes. Number six. Ordinance number P-2735, 2014.
Number five.
Oh, sorry. Warrants.
Number five. Wow, let's get it over there.
Can't spend any money.
Mr. President?
Number warrants.
Mr. President?
You're up for your end.
I move we approve the following warrant. Warrant number 11 of 2014 totaling $2,000,2... I'm sorry, $2,711,638 comprising the general and sewer fund payroll for October 9, 2014 in the amount of $636,649.93. The general and sewer fund payroll for October 23, 2014 in the amount of $669,360.98. The general fund dispersments number 11 of 2014 in the amount of $883,338.79. Sewer fund dispersments number 11 of 2014 in the amount of $243,684.43. Community Development Lock Grant Fund dispersment number 11 of 2014 in the amount of $73,554.73. Capital Projects Fund dispersment number 11 of 2014 in the amount of $202,062.10. Cable Access dispersment number 11 of 2014 in the amount of $34.97. And a credit card statement ending October 6 of 2014 in the amount of $2,952.7.
Second.
Motion being seconded.
Mr. President, our auditor has been through these warrants. Any questions he's had have been answered to his satisfaction. He recommends, and I recommend, that we approve these warrants.
Okay. Any other discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. Demilio?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarty? Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leavitt?
Yes. On to number six. Ordinance number P-2735, 2014. Commissioner Holmes.
Mr. President, thank you. Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number 2735 of 2014 authorizing the issuance of Township of Haverford 2014 general obligation series for an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $12 million. And the ordinance itself has about a 28-line title. I don't think it needs to be read entirely into the record, but the ordinance itself, just so people understand, it authorizes the incurrence of the debt. It provides for the issuance of certain bonds. It appoints a paying agent sinking fund depository, paying agency agreement, sets forth denominations, maturities, rates of interest. Also, book entry-only systems authorizes the execution delivery of the bonds themselves, as well as an official statement, and all the other authorizations necessary for the... For us to issue these bonds. With us tonight is William Richter of the law firm of Reed Smith. He has acted as our bond counsel in this transaction. He ultimately will rule on the tax-exempt nature of the interests of these bonds, as well as conduct other necessary steps for these bonds to be issued. Before I call Mr. Richter up, I'll explain a couple of things, and may not need Mr. Richter. A question was raised about the price, about the dollar amount, $12 million. This ordinance tonight is not... Is slightly out of the ordinary in that we are issuing this... We are passing this ordinance tonight, but these bonds won't be priced until Wednesday. The reason for that is that tomorrow is Veterans Day. And in order for us to be able to issue these bonds by year-end, it's a very tight time schedule. We wanted to do this... We wanted to authorize these bonds at this regularly scheduled meeting. But pricing the bonds today and then having a day off where the underwriters can't turn around and sell the bonds the very next day may affect, in a negative manner, the price that we could get for these bonds. For that reason, our financial advisor, Mr. Walker, everybody here is familiar with Mr. Walker, as is, I believe, the listening and watching audience, who has been advising us for several years now on our various financial issues. It is his suggestion that we postpone the pricing until Wednesday and Thursday. And that's why two things are in these bonds. There is a maximum interest rate of 6%. There's a maximum dollar amount of $12 million. This board will not be authorized... This township will not be incurring $12 million of debt. For each of the various series of bonds, we have to provide parameters that allow the pricing to rise or fall to whatever interest rate the market demands. We've set a maximum rate of 6% that nobody would be authorized to go beyond. Bonds are also priced, not only at an interest rate, but sometimes they're issued at a premium or they are issued at a discount, which means the face amount of the bond isn't the amount of the bond that is ultimately purchased by the market. And so when you take 30 years of bonds, and in each one of those, we have to set a maximum principal and a maximum interest rate, that's why we end up with the number 12 million as opposed to 10. But as I said, this will... When pricing is finished on Wednesday, we will not incur more than $10 million of debt, and I can assure you that we will not have interest rates at 6% or, I think, even close to 6%. I certainly invite anybody to ask... To invite Mr. Richter up to discuss that issue if they have any further questions. Mr. Walker was unavoidably detained tonight, but I know he has been available numerous other times to discuss with our township manager, any other Commissioners, and our finance director, any concerns they had. And I would invite our finance director and our bond counsel to certainly either fill in any gaps or correct anything I might have said incorrectly in describing this bond ordinance. Mr. Richter.
We get a second yet?
Second. I'll second.
Yeah, let's second it. Somebody second it?
Hold it. That's the longest motion I've ever heard.
I have nothing to add. That was pretty good, Larry.
Thanks, Bill.
This is referred to as a parameters ordinance. It establishes parameters according to which the township can incur debt in the future. The president and vice president of the board are delegated the power to approve the final details of the bonds when they're priced. But the idea here was not to issue more than $10 million of bonds this year. Issuing less than 10 has certain advantages in terms of some tax advantages. So the county's... Or the township's plan of finance is to limit this bond issue to 10 million. The 12 million was a number recommended by the financial advisor just to allow some leeway in moving principal amounts to different maturities. But the maximum annual debt service amounts are attached as an exhibit to the ordinance.
Does our township finance director have anything to add?
No, other than averaging around 3.5 right now, 3 to 3.5 real.
Great.
Sir...
Do you want us to repeat that? So...
Right. What our finance director just said is that right now, missable bonds of these maturities and for a credit as strong as ours are currently averaging about 3.5%.
Okay.
Sir, I just have one question, if you could. I'm reading through this, and I understand almost everything except the operation of a rebate fund. I'm not familiar with what the rebate fund is and how it works. Could you just explain that to me?
Arbitr... These bonds will be issued as tax-exempt bonds. The interest paid on the bonds is not to be included in the gross income of the holder of the bond.
Right. I understand that.
That aspect of the bonds brings into play a lot of tax rules. One of those tax rules is that unless the township spends its bond proceeds rapidly, any amounts it earns on the investment of the bond proceeds above the amount that it could have earned had it invested at the yield on the bonds have to be paid as a rebate payment or tax to the United States Treasury.
To the federal government? Okay.
You're not going to earn anywhere close to the bond yield. You can't earn anything on an investment, short-term investment anymore. At least that's been my observation. So it's kind of academic, but it's a requirement for the tax-exempt status of the bonds.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Richter, I did have one question. There's... We authorized in the ordinance the ability to seek bond insurance if we need it, but are we insuring these bonds? Are we going out without insurance right now?
I have not heard of any intent to get bond insurance.
Great.
All right. Any other questions?
So it is certainly my recommendation, fellow Commissioners, that we adopt this ordinance. It is due to the nature of this particular type of ordinance. The first reading is a final, as Mr. Richter indicated. This will be priced Wednesday and Thursday... Priced on Wednesday, at which point the president and the vice president and the township manager will have the ability to review the pricing and then ultimately ratify the ordinance. And I recommend that we pass the ordinance.
Okay. Any questions?
I just have a quick question. It's $12 million, but I thought... Is this... Correct me if I'm wrong, but this is going to satisfy both buildings?
No, no, no. This is just the first of the...
This is just the first...
This is the first of the borrowing. See, we can...
First of the borrowing, then we're going to borrow more.
By keeping it to $10 million, we can take advantage of bank qualification.
Right, no, I got that. I just want to make sure we're going to borrow more money, right?
Oh, yeah. We're going to borrow in '15.
Because we allocated 5.5 million for the library and...
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. I mean, this is... If you recall, when we talked about the financings that we would do to do this, this financings themselves would be staged as we were going through the building process, and that enables us to take advantage each year of bank qualification, which is a better pricing opportunity for us on the bonds. And with how we have staged out the potential construction, including the library several years down the road, it enables us to do this in '14, then '15, and then '16 if necessary.
So... Sorry, can I ask you a question? The proposed fiscal year is at 6%, and I realize at 6% it's not going to be...
Steve, can you ask a question into the microphone? Can you come over to the...
No problem, sorry.
To the microphone, Amy?
Why did we move them back there, anyway?
We didn't move them.
Our heads were in the TV view.
Yeah, in the TV.
Really?
Yeah.
Gary's too tall.
Yeah.
Gary, you know, slouch.
I understand that this is at 6%. I fully agree it will never be at 6%, thank God.
I understand that this is at 6%, and I fully agree it will never be at 6%, thank God. It's at probably, what, 3.5%, you said? Okay.